And now I'd like to call to order the January 29, 2020, formal city council meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark. Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. We have an interpreter here today, Mario. Will you please introduce yourself?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mario Barajas and I'm going to be giving a brief announcement in Spanish for our Spanish speakers that might be present today. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Mario Barajas, voy a estar sirviendo como su intérprete para el día de hoy. Si acaso alguien necesita el servicio de un intérprete de español, pueden acudir hacia cualquier miembro de la ciudad, hacia la parte de atrás del edificio, para poder conseguir sus auriculares para escuchar la interpretación. Gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G6663 through 6667, S46259, 46301, 46309 through 46335, and Resolution 21805.
Thank you. We next move to the boards and commissions portion of our agenda. We have a distinguished group of citizens who are willing to serve our city on issues ranging from planning and zoning to youth and education. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
Yes, we do. I would like to make a motion to approve Mayor and City Council Boards and Commissions nominations.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I will now swear in this distinguished group of citizens. Repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
That I will faithfully and impartially
discharge the duties of the office of
Discharge the duties of the office of
(inaudible) our fantastic force.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you for your service. If you could please go behind the podium, the council Thank you all for your service. We will next move to the liquor license portion of our application. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve items 2 through 20.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes. I have a motion to approve items 21 through 77, except the following. Items 31, 43, 49, 55, and 77. Items 24, 29, and 44 are being withdrawn, and items 74 and 75 are being withdrawn so they can be re-advertised for a public hearing on March 4, 2020 Agenda. Items 30 is being continued to February 5, 2020, and excluding these items for public comment, 28, 52, and 53. And item 45 will also be continued to February 5, 2020.
Thank you. Any comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We next move to item 28. Leonard Clark has filled out a card on the item. Mr. Clark, will you please come down?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Leonard Clark. I live in the beautiful city of El Mirage right now, but I will be back to Phoenix, my birthplace. I just want to thank you for even putting this item on the agenda. Small businesses to be helped with assistance from these funds are very important. You know, we have the big businesses, but all these big businesses, most of them start as just one proprietor or a small group of people. So I think that to help low-income people is very important for their businesses. So I hope you'll vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve item 24?
28.
28, I'm sorry.
We have a motion in a second on item 28. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes unanimously. We next move to item 31, which is a public hearing for the proposed 103rd Avenue and Southern annexation. We will open the public hearing. Mr. Clark has filled out a card to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Since, my name is Leonard Clark. Since being born in the city of Phoenix, I've seen it grow, just like many of us have, even if we've lived here for shorter times. And I actually hope you will vote for this. You know, I've thought of something. You know, the city of Phoenix is very welcoming, and yes, we have to be prudent about what we annex and invite in, but you know, just like our public schools, they have to accept children, whether they're the, you know, the Einstein children or the children that might not be the Einstein children, children with physical and cognitive abilities. Our city is a welcoming city. We have great things coming out of the city of Phoenix, and wherever we can expand our influence, I think that's a better thing, you know, because our public schools, the city of Phoenix, just like that, we're a loving and accepting city, and that's why, I'm hoping you'll vote for this, that's why I like living in the city of Phoenix, or will be living, you know, being from here, because of all the services that this city enjoys and how hard you work to make sure. Living here is better than being outside of the city in Phoenix in some rural area with no bus service, all these things. If you vote for this, I just want to congratulate the person petitioning you, because now they're in the city of Phoenix, and it's a really good place to live, despite what some people would say. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. The applicant does have a representative here to testify. If any council members have any questions, not seeing any, we will close the public hearing. This is a public hearing only today, no action today. We next move to item 43, related to food systems. Councilwoman Williams?
Mayor, I had real reservations about supporting this. $200,000. They have three very large goals, and it's a consortium of about 10 different agencies. And I am very concerned because their goals are very expensive, and $200,000 in 10 communities doesn't seem like enough to really accomplish anything. But what I want to make sure, if we go ahead and do this, that we just don't come up with a new department, and we have to hire staff, etc. So I will support it, but I'm just telling you, I am very concerned about it.
Okay. We will turn to our deputy city manager, Karen Peters, if you have any comments.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilwoman Williams, I have spoken with Roseanne Albright, who is the key staff leading this grant application, and the funds that we would receive would be for a regional effort that we would lead to implement actions related to a vision of food security. We do not contemplate creating a new department or division to handle this.
Wonderful, thank you. And this proposes multiple different projects that might be part of it. I think, from my perspective, the agriculture entrepreneurship might be the most exciting. There's also one to create a new app with healthy recipes, and there are many apps for healthy recipes, so maybe that wouldn't be the first on my list, but I think it is, food security is an important one for our community, so I'm going to be supporting this item. Councilwoman Pastor?
So, I actually agree with you, Councilwoman Williams, in the sense that that was one of my concerns, because I know what it means and how would it, to administer a grant, and that just factoring staff time and the pieces of a grant. I am actually conflicted out on this, because one of the partnerships, I believe, is the Maricopa Community Colleges. But what I'm going to ask for is that the, that the community colleges get expanded with those that have agriculture pieces, because it, there's not just one community college that has that. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
I'm really excited about this program. I think, coming from the district that has the most food deserts in it, I really support this work and hope that we could find solutions specifically for South Phoenix that has a lot of food deserts. So, thank you for bringing this.
Thank you. Noting that Councilwoman Pastor will not be participating, we need a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion on item 43, authorization to apply for accept, disburse funds, and enter into agreements for a food system vision prize.
Second.
Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes eight to zero. We next move to item 49, which is an intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for right-of-way acquisition along SR-51 near Orangewood. And this, this, from my perspective, is a, a good news item. In today's times of political division, I'm very happy that the city of Phoenix was able to work across party and city lines to, to get things done for our residents. Water security is enormously important for a desert city such as Phoenix, and our success as a city depends on our water supply and making sure we invest in infrastructure. Over the past months, Phoenix's Water Department has examined ways to transfer water to North Phoenix from an existing water treatment facility to help lessen dependency on an increasingly volatile Colorado River supply. The most direct route brought a new pipeline through Dreamy Draw Park, and our neighbors and our city strongly values our park system and pushed us to look for an alternative solution that minimized damage or impact to the park's ecosystem. So, we were able to work with the State of Arizona, Governor, and the State Director of ADOT. We really appreciate their partnership in helping us work to find land parallel to SR-51 that would be a good corridor for the pipeline. So, I think this is a nice solution and helps us work for, work for a good solution. A lot of people have spent a lot of time on this. Thank you for being involved. This goes through Council District 3 and Council District 6, so if either of the council members who worked very hard on this would like to provide comments, Councilman DeCecio.
Oh, Mayor, I too want to give you thanks. I want to give Deb Stark thanks. I want to give, in particular, thanks also to Catherine Sorensen, she's not here right now.
She is.
To Governor Ducey and his staff that worked diligently to make sure, and then Arizona Department of Transportation. These types of things don't get done in a vacuum. They get done because people start to work together. The protections to the Piastua name and to the Piastua Mountain are significant. I don't think people realize the importance of that and the protection of that, but also the protection of the neighborhood that's there. This is definitely a win-win. It's fiscally responsible, because it's going to be a lot less expensive for us long-term. It's also the right thing to do, because it protects the mountain, it protects the Piastua Peak, and at the same time, it put together a plan in place, thanks to everybody working together. And Mayor, I do want to thank you, you know, you did a lot of work on this, you and your staff. Deb Stark, you did a significant amount of work on this as well. And again, you know, without the help of the governor, without the help of ADOT, we would not be here today. And to the neighbors, how many of the neighbors are here? I see all those hands. This is a huge start right now, a huge start. We've still got to get the sign off, but it looks like it's going to happen, and I'm just happy for you, and that this is something that you've really worked hard to try to get. It's just, it's a great day to see this, and you get to see cooperations across the aisle. Thank you, Mayor.
Catherine.
Where's Catherine? Are you here?
Yes, she is.
I know I mentioned your name earlier, but I don't see you here. Where?
Wait.
Remember, I just had a birthday, so I can't see that far. So, thank you, Catherine. I mean, without your work, I mentioned this to the city manager before, is that you are literally one of the top that we have here at the city of Phoenix. We don't always agree on some issues. You are, I'm telling you, you are that good. You are that diligent when people, she is, Catherine, please turn around, look at her. I want you to look at this lady.[1008.13][1008.13](laughter) I want everyone to realize how good she is. So, individuals across the state of Arizona know her as a water czar type of person, because she knows everything about water. Anything and everything about water, she knows about. And she's highly respected, not just in the state of Arizona, but in the entire country. So, we're lucky to have her, Ed. You're an amazing individual, and thank you for all your work on this, Catherine. Okay, I will cut it off. I know you're embarrassed, because you don't like it, but you're going to get it anyways. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, I'd be happy to make the motion[1042.65][1042.65](laughter)
to approve, and I will also want to say again, thanks to the neighborhood. I mean,
you really drove this. You really drove it. So, a lot of the credit goes to you. But also to Felcita Mendoza. She's been a project manager on this as well. I made her come out to a couple of my gain events to talk about it along the 32nd Street, so, but this is a good example of people coming together, but the real thanks goes to the neighborhood.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Excellent. We have a motion in a second. And I also want to recognize the state representative, Erin Lieberman, who was very involved and who was the first one to bring the solution with the SR-51 to my attention. So, thank you to Representative Lieberman as well. We have individuals here to address the council. We will begin with Jim Buster and then Dr. Frank Gruber.
Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. On behalf of the Environmental Defense Fund, I'm here to register EDF's support for the proposed construction of the water transmission main between 24th Street Water Treatment Plant and 32nd Street and Bell Road. EDF believes this project is one of the essential steps the city of Phoenix needs to undertake in order to ensure reliable water supplies for existing residents in North Phoenix, and to create the redundancy that is needed for this city and their water infrastructure going forward. As you're well aware, the Colorado River is over allocated by approximately 1.2 million acre feet each year, and the city of Phoenix has been a leader in the efforts to stabilize Lake Mead and the Colorado River system. EDF appreciates the far-sighted, collaborative, and credible work of your staff to improve the health of the Colorado River, and at the same time, the city is developing smart plans and investments necessary to serve all of the Phoenix residents under a wide range of possible water scenarios. We know that even if Lake Mead drops to critical levels in a way that impacts the city's Colorado River water rights, Phoenix needs to ensure alternative water supplies for North Phoenix. As a former city councilman, mayor, and the vice chair of the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association, I appreciate that the infrastructure necessary to guard against critically low levels in the reservoir is technically complex and takes years to develop. The water transmission main project is a proactive step that ensures the city can serve North Phoenix residents with the safe and reliable water, even if we encounter critically low water levels in Lake Mead. We're mindful of the short-term neighborhood impacts of this project, but we believe the city is serving the best long-term entrance, interests of its residents by moving forward with this important water service reliability project. EDF looks forward to continuing to collaborate with the city of Phoenix to promote the health of the Colorado River on which the entire region is reliant, and again, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Dr. Frank Gruber will be followed by Dr. Linda Gruber.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. And that's really the major thrust of what I have to say, and much of what already has been said, my, my voice will be an echo. But I do feel the cooperation that has been received by the community, from the council, from the council committees, from our councilperson, Sal DeCecio, and the chair of the subcommittee that heard it, Councilman Stark, were essential in getting this, this passed and through. As I said, my name is Dr. Frank Gruber. I'm a new member, as far as this community is concerned. Came in in September and got a notice in October, so that gave us a real welcome to the neighborhood, but gave us a heads-up and an opportunity to meet our neighbors in a, in a, in a meaningful fashion. My area of expertise is in safety and loss control, primarily in traffic and occupational safety. So, my initial concerns with this project dealt with its construction and location. And I think what is happening today, and was that happened the last two months, with the work that has been done by Representative Lieberman and the ADOT team, has alleviated many of those concerns. The, the involvement of the citizenry, I think though a little retarded in its start, I think once catching on, did provide some input, that provided impetus, I think, to the council, has been noted. And I, I see the involvement of, of citizenry in our representative government as, as crucial. I certainly hope we can, we can team together in the future to do good things for the city of Phoenix. Thanks for all your efforts and time to speak with you today.
Thank you. Dr. Linda Gruber will be followed by Rochelle Malinoff.
Mayor Gallego and councilmembers, my name is Linda Gruber, and I'm a resident of the Madison Heights, Biltmore Highlands neighborhoods. Today I stand before you as a resident who has only lived in that area for about four months, but I'm able to be here today because you and/or your staff did read and respond to my letters, emails, and phone calls regarding the drought pipeline project. I thank you sincerely for that. Communication can be bumpy, and it was at points. However, your willingness to consider other ideas and alternate routes led all of us to where we are today with a workable compromise. A good portion of the things goes to you, Madam Mayor, State Representative Erin Lieberman, and councilmembers Stark and DeCecio. As I've written previously, your staff do, does an excellent job in fielding messages from residents, whether residents make contact by phone, email, snail mail, or in person, and they do it in a polite and efficient manner. It is never easy to be on the front line. Nonetheless, they are fine representatives of the city and should be commended. As a fourth generation Chicagoan, I take great pride in that fact. Now though, I have an adopted city, Phoenix, and I can take pride in that, confident that mutual cooperation and respect will continue to be the operative concepts as the drought pipeline project unfolds. That, and the hope that I can now hang my orange shirt at the back of my closet with its job done. Thank you.[1503.22][1503.22](applause)
Rochelle will be followed by John Furness.
Hi, my name is Shelley Malinoff, and again, this is another thank you for a really great job done. I have to tell you, when I retired a few years ago, and I made a list of things I was going to be doing, going to council meetings was not on the list. But I have to say, it's been a great experience. I am overwhelmingly impressed by the fact that you listen, and sometimes it's tough. We go on for a long time, but you pay attention, and people work together, and I think this has been, it's a great compromise. So, I really appreciate it. I just do need to tell you, I thought of you all this weekend. I was, I live up at the trailhead on 22nd Street, right at the trailhead, and I'm driving home, and I get to my corner, and there were four fire trucks from Phoenix, from Scottsdale. I don't know why there were so many. And as I'm turning into my house, first I make sure, it's nothing to do with my house, my husband's okay, everything. It's like, hey, why are all these fire trucks there? They were there to help someone on the mountain. And I was just thinking, thank goodness, this street is not being used and being dug up, because this happens. I mean, unfortunately, fire engines are always going down our street to pluck people off the mountain, or they're using helicopters to pluck people off the mountain. So, it was really, it made me think of you. I don't want to be thinking of you that much again, but I do appreciate it. And also, just to tell you again, this weekend, I was coming out of my house in the morning, and there were just so many cars down 22nd Street with people coming out to hike the preserves. I mean, it's more than ever before, and there were kids and dogs, and it was just really nice to see. They were not looking at their phones. They were just, they were out there to enjoy. So, again, I thought of you, and I say thank you. So, I'm going to end, and I just have to say, I was driving in with a neighbor, and she taught me a new proverb, and she said, "If a minister talks more than 20 minutes, he's, he or she is not going to save any more souls." So, I'm not a minister, I'm not trying to save souls, but I just want to make it short and sweet and say thank you.
Thank you. And we do have many ways to be involved in the city, like the Youth and Education Commission that we appointed earlier today, that don't involve pipelines. John will be followed by Catherine Roxlow.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, councilmen, councilwomen. My name's John Furness. I serve as chair as the chair of the Sonoran Preserve, Mountain Parks and Preserve Committee. It's a committee serves at the pleasure of the parks board, advises them on mountain parks-related issues. We've been hearing comment, presentations on this particular topic as far back as fall of 17. So, this, this has been, you know, clearly on, on the radar for quite a while. I've been able to slice a lot of my comments out in light of the, what we've done so far, but as recently as January 15, a number of your fellow council members sat through a, what do they call it, the Land Use and Livability Stub Committee, where they encountered substantial public comment in opposition to this project, again, as, as it was proposed at that time. To their credit, they took the difficult task of, of voting against a number of petitions that asked to delay the project while this was all sorted out, and even going on the basis of Water Services Department comment that said, "Hey, we're in discussions, but we don't have an answer yet, but we're optimistic." So, that's as recently, literally, as two weeks ago. So, fast forward, we're here today to celebrate, if you will, what's been done in the last, what's culminated in the last two weeks. It would be a mistake to say all that work was done in the last two weeks. So, to your credit, and all the people that were involved in this, and the communities in particular, their passion, their patience, and, and moving this thing forward, there's a commitment on the part of Water Services to work closely with parks, to minimize the impact, to coordinate schedules, to make sure that it's restored to as near pristine condition as we can do it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Catherine will be followed by Catherine Kunitz.
Hi, thank you. I'm Catherine Roxlow.
I'm Catherine Roxlo. I live in Phoenix, and I have, I'd like to submit something for the record, and I have an extra copy here. If Karen Peters could have a copy, I would appreciate it. This is the ode to the Phoenix City Council. "Twas the month of October in 2019, when flyers on mailboxes began to be seen. From the neighborhood rose such a cry and a flutter, City Council said, 'Oh, my, what's the mutter? A 66-inch pipeline and a 48-inch pipe to boot, a hole in the mountain preserve is causing citizens to toot.' 'Calm down,' said Karen Peters, 'this money is well spent. These pipelines are needed for water management.'" Catherine Sorensen wrote letters explaining roots and the reason. Deb Stark walked the pipe route after Christmas rainy season. "In the end, you did listen and changed the route for the best. It is safer and cheaper, and who knows the rest? Phoenix is growing fast, and it takes all of us, you know. We want changes to improve quality and safety as we grow. We thank you for listening and considering our cries. Please let us, us citizens, help you to grow Phoenix-wise."
Catherine will be followed by Patrick McMullin.
Mayor Gallego and councilmembers, in contrast to the Dr., Dr., I'm going blank, Kruger, my husband and I have been residents of the neighborhood for 49 and a half years. We lived in one of the first homes built north of, oh, I want to say Myrtle. One year, we moved into our home one year after being married, getting married, and have remained in that neighborhood because of the special feeling, the wonderful neighbors, the support that neighbors provide to each other in times of need. So it is a very special place to us, and we are so glad to have you both as new neighbors. What I would like to say is, thank you for listening to us. Thank you for giving serious consideration to our concerns. Thank you for your willingness to explore more viable and less disruptive options. Our goal in the neighborhood was to protect the neighborhood as well as the preserve up at the end of 22nd Street, west of the Trailhead where Shelley lives. You helped us achieve that goal, and for that, we are most grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final card is from Patrick McMullin.
Mayor and City Councilmembers, I do have copies. Thank you, sir. My name is Dr. Patrick McMullin. I'm a citizen of Phoenix and president of the Phoenix Mountain Preservation Council, PMPC, a longtime steward and advocate of the Phoenix Mountain Preserves and for local communities. I'm also a Vietnam veteran, '71-'73, and use the preserves as a source of peace and sanctuary. PMPC is here today regarding Agenda Item 49, the Intergovernmental Agreement, the IGA with ADOT, for the right-of-way along 51 to be used for the Water Services Department Pipeline Construction Project. We are attending today to listen and gather information. PMPC is currently neutral regarding this matter. We would very much like to be supportive, but we are very glad that alternative pipeline routes are being explored. But we do not yet have support, as we are still waiting for more information, like the terms and conditions of the IGA and the project open house next week. We look forward to this information. The last thing we heard was on January 15th at the Land Use and Livability Subcommittee meeting, when we were told that a draft IGA with ADOT was being worked on, and that updates of this draft agreement would be provided as more information comes available. We were really happy to hear that this new alternative route was being considered, and that the idea of receiving timely project updates sounds great. That information seems to be available now, since the council is considering entering into this IGA today, but we still haven't seen any updates. When our petition was denied by the Land Use and Livability Subcommittee, Councilmember Thelma Williams stated that she expected that the Water Service Department would engage. We will be attending the project open house on February 4th. However, we are tired of receiving information after the fact and having to chase down project details ourselves. We hope to receive more clarification about the details and the unknown things on this project. I want to thank you very much. You guys do great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Noakowski.
You know, Mayor, I just really want to thank the community for coming out. You guys have such a wonderful neighborhood. Most of the time, when the cases are won, we never have people come back and thank the council, and especially our staff for all their hard work. I know that the Water Department went out there many times, met with individuals, met with groups, and had special tours with people that needed that. And I really want to thank our Water Department for all their leadership and making this happen, but most of all, our two councilmembers, you know, Deborah and Sal, for really pushing at the state level. You know, we've been pushing for a freeway for the last 35 years, and we finally got it built, the 202. You guys did it within a year, so that is incredible. So you guys are miracle workers, so thank you, and thank you for coming back and letting us know everything turned out well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams.
I also wanted to say thank you for that thank you card with the picture. Great group. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Pastor.
I have a question about the IGA. As comments were being made, we're going into an agreement with an IGA. What I look in my packet is that the details of the IGA is not part of the packet. And so at what point will we see the IGA? Or at what point will we see it, and then at what point will it become public?
Thank you, and we will welcome our deputy city manager, Karen Peters. Subject of poetry.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Catherine, for that ode. So I'm going to ask, I'm so flustered by this poem. I'm going to ask Water Director Catherine Sorensen and Assistant Water Director Troy Hayes to tell us the latest about the IGA.
Absolutely. So Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, the basics of the agreement is that the Arizona Department of Transportation will be selling us a portion of their right-of-way. In exchange for that, we will be taking over maintenance of that particular property and a retention basin adjacent to it. That's basically all that the agreement says. I apologize if there wasn't enough detail in the packet for you to discern that. It's relatively straightforward, and we're just asking the council to authorize us to enter into it.
Well, thank you. I just wanted it on record, because the gentleman asked, and so I wanted to have it on record of the fact of how straightforward it is, and, but also have an understanding that he had been asking for information, and it didn't seem like there was a connection. So I just wanted him to hear it, that we heard him asking, and were able then to get the detail. Appreciate all your work. I know exactly what you've been doing. I'm now wanting to work on another element of that space, because my Madison Meadows families are all being impacted by it, and see if we can help the other crew or other group of neighbors that are going to be impacted by it. But really appreciate it, and thank you.
Oh, Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman DeCicchio.
Oh, we got them up here. I need to mention Troy Hayes, too. I forgot, Troy, how many meetings have we had on that thing? You've got to thank the people that worked it, and they did all the work. I mean, we get a lot of the credit up here, but those individuals right there, the governor, ADOT, others, they really deserve a lot of your thanks. They really do. They really pulled it together. If you could let us know, too, what we're looking at for the easement cost.
Mayor, Councilmember DeCicchio, my understanding is it's $1 for the right-of-way purchase.
I want to make sure people know that. It's a dollar. So we worked out an agreement, and that is significant savings to the City of Phoenix. The saving, it saves the neighborhood, saves the mountain, and saves money. How much better can you get than that? Thank you, Mayor.
And while we're recognizing people who were involved with this, Tom Remus, who works on our freeway program, has been very involved, as have our partners of the Maricopa Association of Government, and many, many other people, but probably perhaps too many to recognize personally, so shall we move to the vote? Roll call. DeCicchio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes. We next move to Item 52, which is authorization to enter into an agreement with the Salt River Project for Water Transportation. Leonard Clark has filled out a card on this item.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I hope you'll support this. I guess it's outside of the project to have City of Phoenix, I guess, put water through these canals, but the reason I think, you know, I'm not an expert, and I don't communicate with your staff enough, but the reason I support it is, one reason is, inside it talks about Avondale, or it's a far west city, and I'm not only a Phoenician, but I lived in Glendale for a long time, and I think that it's very, it's a very good thing when the City of Phoenix goes out of its way to also help neighboring cities, because there's a lot of infrastructure challenges and things going out there, and rather than Phoenix, you know, saying, "We're not going to help," that you're working with them, because our beautiful citizens, community members to the west of us as well, and Avondale, Tolleson, El Mirage, you know, I think that the City of Phoenix, if we can work with their city governments, in this case, it sounds like the water will be used to help other communities outside of the city. So I don't think Phoenix gets thanked enough for that. A lot of times, we're just criticized for it, so I hope you'll vote for it, and thank you for doing this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This is related to the item we had before. We are working very hard to make sure we have strong water infrastructure, and that we invest ahead of time and prepare. And Councilwoman Williams, who represents us on many of the regional bodies, has been very, very busy, so thank you all. With that, do we have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve Item 52, Authorization to Enter Into Agreement with Salt River Project for Water Transportation.
Roll call. DeCicchio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes. Passes unanimously. We next move to Item 53, which is Proposed Bus Service Improvements. Leonard Clark. Thank you. Do we have a motion, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve Item 53.
Second.
Roll call. DeCicchio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes. Passes unanimously. We next move to Item 55, which is related to our Diesel Emission Reduction Act grant. Tomorrow morning, Councilwoman Garcia and I will join our Public Works Department, the Office of Environmental Programs, and our Regional EPA Administrator to celebrate tangible progress towards lower emissions and cleaner air for our community. We applied for a DARA grant in 2019 and have been awarded funding to offset the cost of 10 new low-emission, heavy-duty trucks that will serve the Phoenix area, and this is, today's vote is a further opportunity to seek out more support, as we want to make our municipal fleet more efficient. We are targeting the oldest, least efficient vehicles in our fleet, so that we can have a bigger impact and demonstrate the city's commitment to lead by example in meeting our 2050 sustainability goal of cleaner air. This comes at a time when people all over the country are gathering in Maricopa County to talk about waste reduction and really highlight the ways that this community has been a leader, so it's good news, and hopefully this grant will lead to even further good news. With that, would entertain, I'm sorry, we have a card from Leonard Clark.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I hope you'll vote for this. I want to thank the mayor and the council, you know, and I want to thank maybe 17-year-olds now, I don't know, Greta Thunberg, and all of our young people, and old hippies, and people who just care about how clean the air we breathe, you know, how clean the air that we're going to be breathing also in the future generations for our kids. And I just leave you with this, I'm not trying to be too picky here, but now let's go for electric garbage trucks. I hear in Seattle, other states, they're doing this. We can do this. Phoenix can be the leader, and ever since this new council has come in, especially thank you to the mayor, I'm seeing positive environmental changes happening. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council.
Councilman Garcia.
Yes, I just want to, again, salute this. I think being from one of the most polluted districts in the city, we welcome this. 2050 seems like a long ways away, but also, because it's right around the corner, so I'm glad we're taking action, and glad that this department that has very lofty goals is the one that's moving forward with this.
Thank you. We would entertain a motion.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve Item 55, Environmental Protection Agency for Clean Diesel Funding Assistance Program, FY 2020.
We have a motion and a second from Councilwoman Williams. Roll call. DeCicchio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes. Passes eight to zero. We next move to our final agendized item, number 77, Development Impact Fees. Will the city clerk please read the title?
Item 77 is for Ordinance G6666, an ordinance relating to impact fees and water resource acquisition fees by amending the Phoenix City Code, Chapter 29, Section 29-3 to Section 29-12, Section 29-16, Section 29, Appendix A, and Chapter 30, Section 30-4 of the Phoenix City Code.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve Item 77.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. DeCicchio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes. Passes eight to zero. Thank you. That concludes our agendized portion of the meeting. We will next move to citizen comment. I will turn to our city attorney, who will help introduce the item.
Mayor, members of the council, the citizen comment part of the agenda provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the council to listen to the comments from the public, but prohibits the members from discussing or taking action on matters presented during citizen comment.
Wonderful, thank you. First will be Brett Gross. And Brett will be followed by Michael Joseph Garcia. Is Mr. Gross here?
He's right here.
Oh, thank you.
First time here.
Welcome.
Thanks for your light.
Hi, my name is Brett Gross. I live at the corner of 31st Street in Windsor in Phoenix, right across from Perry Park. I've read about homeless issues in Phoenix. Living across from a public park, I see them firsthand every day. Some of these people are chronic. They don't want to go nowhere. They want to live in the park. I happened to talk to some Community Bridges people this morning, because I'm a schoolbus driver in that area. I asked the lady, "Did you take account of the homeless people in Perry Park?" She goes, "Yes. The people in Perry Park don't want no help." Back in July, someone was parked along the street legally in front of my house. Him and his buddies had pulled all his property in his car, charged their phones, walked to the park bench, and dominated with all their belongings, to say it nicely. Go beg for money, walk back to the park, drink beer, and sell drugs. I wrote a letter to the police chief, "Community action person, come out there." And she did a good job, because she cited people at night. It's not, no one's supposed to be there at night, including these guys. Some officers would, I'd call after 11 o'clock, the officers would talk to them and say, "Okay, go back." The officers would talk to them and say, "Okay, go back to your car." I don't think people, some people don't realize these eyesores you see on the street when you're stopping at a light are vicious. I continue to call on them, they continue to threaten me because the police can't be there 24/7. And as I live there, I watch these people dominate the park. They tell other homeless people, and it spreads to where there's ramadas, they use the bathrooms to dominate that. Being a bus driver, I drive by a little park at 28th Street and Thomas, off to the left, Little Pie-shaped Park. There's nobody there. 28th Street and Indian School just north, field trips, we take the kids there. There's no homeless people there. It's six times as big as Perry Park. Two years ago, Columbus Day, there was 28 people in that park, and I called because they're literally camping out on the side of my house. I don't think people, like I say, they're vicious. The police officers don't want to deal with them. You don't like looking at them at the light. They don't like citing them because they give them a bad address. And they surely don't want to arrest them because they got to itemize all their property. Park rangers do a good job. I wish the park rangers would start citing them for criminal ordinances. I just want you to make a good decision when you talk about homelessness in Phoenix. That's just one part. I appreciate your time very much.
Thank you for coming down.
Mayor?
Councilman DeCecio.
And I know legally, we can't respond directly to you. It's a legal issue. But can someone from the Police Department meet with him right now and get an idea of what's going on? I mean, it bothers him if it's even half of what he's saying right now. If we could, Steve Martos is over there, he's one of the commanders.
Michael Joseph Garcia, followed by Elizabeth Venable.
Yeah, I'm Michael Joseph Garcia. I've been on the streets for about 15, 13 years now. I've been put in this situation not on my own will. I got majorly sick, colon cancer, prostate cancer, whole nine yards. Now I'm deteriorating. I didn't ask for this. Nobody asked for this. But I have one thing to say. A lot of your Police Department threw away a lot of valuable medications that I take, twice away last year. Did I do anything about it? No. The medication I was taking said I couldn't be out in the sun. Okay? Gabapin, over 2,400 milligrams, tells you not to be out in the sun. It's put on your prescription bottles. Now, I'm not happy about what I see out there. I'm really not. I didn't want to be here tonight. But you know what? Everybody needs to come together and come up with a solution. The solution that I haven't planned is not what you guys would like to hear. So I won't say it. But everybody else needs to come together. Because I tried going to the churches and trying to do the right thing by helping my communities, by cleaning up the parks after people. And what did I get? Ticketed for sitting in the right-of-way, obstructing traffic, and, behold and behold, trespassing in the park at 3:00 when I was told I could, start cleaning at that time because of my medications. Did I beat the tickets? Yeah, I did. Now the sergeant that has a grudge against me, me and him have a real problem. That needs to stop, too. All I'm trying to do is help my fellow man and try to get everybody where they need to be. I've tried doing this before in the zone. Didn't work there. I left. I've been everywhere else to find out the answers, what I could do to help my homeless brothers and sisters. Now I'm back here again. And am I good in health? No. But on my last dying breath, I asked this council to come up with a solution to help with everything. Okay? Some of us are from a church. Some of us are from standard homes that we used to have. None of us can do it anymore. Okay? Some of us, like this gentleman said, some of the homeless, yeah, they're pigs. They're dirty. They don't clean up after themselves. But I've done cleaned up after them. Okay? And I'm tired of being harassed. Okay? It takes me 15 minutes just to walk from across the street to here. My knees are gone, but I'm not a weak link like everybody wants me to be. So I'm asking for the help to get these homeless people on track. Okay? It could have been done a long time ago. Because I am from here. I left here because my grandparents said I needed a better structuring. Well, better structuring? Yeah, I got it. Now I'm back, and all I get is harassed. All I get is to blame. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Councilwoman Pastor.
I think somebody is here from Phoenix Cares. Camera, could you please meet with him and see what we can help and provide him?
Elizabeth Venable, followed by Seth Rao. Rao?
So that's what Phoenix Cares is, so he already has CBI. So that was very good. I'm just here to encourage you all to act on finding real solutions to homelessness, which you can't, sure, you can close a park at a particular time, or you can say you can't be in the sidewalk, you can say you can't be on private property, all of these logical things, but we're still seeing people that are being cited for being on public property. And I know somebody that was recently cited for, I believe it was camping, it may not have been camping, it may have been trespass, for sitting on a piece of cardboard on a blanket. You know, this is the extent to which people, to which officers will define camping or trespass, even during the daytime. So I feel like there's often not enough substance to these arrests to really warrant any of the action, not even withstanding the fact that the Ninth Circuit and the Supreme Court have said so, and we really need action on it. But the other issue I'd like to bring up is that there's supposed to be money for a shelter. I hear there's money out there for a shelter. And I hear the zoning is the only impediment to a shelter that would more than double the shelter capacity in the City of Phoenix. So I'm waiting to see what happens with that. I want to see some people live up to some promises they made in elections with regards to housing. And I want to see if people will put a real emphasis on finding solutions as opposed to just shooing people away because they're unsightly. Or maybe occasionally do drugs, or have mental health problems, or have medical problems, or were the victim of domestic abuse, or any number of reasons they could be homeless. They may not be wanted. They may be invisible to people, or be visibly unattractive, but that doesn't mean that they're people that, A, don't have belongings, and B, don't have the right to sleep. And so we really need to come up with a solution that defines so that they're not sleeping on private property. Okay? If you make it so that they can't sleep on the public property, where are they supposed to go? They do trespass. They are going on private property. So if you don't find any solutions for them, it inevitably leads to other crimes, so, and which are probably more legitimate than public camping or public trespass.
Thank you. Scott Rao, followed by Leonard Clark.
How you doing? This is my first time here in Phoenix, Arizona, and speaking from the city councilship. Thank you for having me here and allowing me to come in and speak. This is a complicated situation that I would like to discuss is, I'm from an organization that's called Targeted in Traffic, or against neurological technology that are human traff, with companies, human trafficking people all around the world, including the U.S. So I would like to introduce to you about human trafficking with remote neural technology. Neural technology has taken off and expansive combining human with interface machinery, this type of machinery that interfaces with a human body and mind, combining artificial intelligence that can automatically map out a person's thought process and can be used as, and to be used to cause individual damages to individuals. So, let's see, artificial intelligence is used for many legal reasons. One of those reasons is for controlling an individual by triggering effects to the human mind and duplicating and copying thoughts of the individual attacking the person's personal way of thinking. Cognitive thought liberties are at stake. When it comes to illegal types of artificial intelligence that is used for invasions on the human body, invasions on the human mind, these types of crimes happen and causes the victim affected by these artificial intelligence weapons, they go through tremendous amounts of continuous torture and mind-reading technology every single day of their life. However, companies are paid to demonstrate experimentation with technology on humans that has lasted for over 60-plus years. There are no laws on these factions, no laws against artificial intelligence, no laws against criminals that are using them. This is a high-powered supercomputer technology that is used in multiple different frames of human trafficking and interfaces with the person's body. Jeffrey Epstein was a human trafficker. People know him all over the world. He had donated money all around the world for artificial intelligence and neural sciences, over $200 billion. For reasons, don't know, but he was part of MIT and Harvard University. MIT knew exactly what he was doing at the time he was donating to them, and a lot of different, a lot of different crimes were happening inside that school. But the neural tech trafficking is used to deprive its victims by verbal constant abuse using a consistent control and monitoring voice system that sends artificial intelligence words to the person's body and their head that way they're hearing artificial intelligence every single day. This is a crime that's covered up. Through constant abuse, constant negative language, okay, so the targeted traffic organization is here to place a hold on the crimes and expose them to the public, and we will not stand by and let these crimes go on anymore, any longer. One of the biggest crimes to me is that the parents that are suffering through this, that is going unheard, people do not know of these crimes, but we're discussing them and we're coming to you today to handle this situation. We need legislators. We need law enforcement. We need everybody that can step in from government to come in and say that they're willing to help these victims that are going through this every single day. No longer will these crimes go unnoticed. No longer will these crimes go unheard. No longer will these crimes go unpunished. We will stop them in their tracks and fulfill our purpose to help protect all human life. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Clark, followed by Joel Copeland.
First of all, I'm parked at a parking meter that doesn't seem to be working. So if I get a ticket, public notice, could I come pay you? You are my witnesses. I'm asking not to give my, no quid pro quo, it's just that the thing is, my parking meter isn't working. So I parked there. So anyways, that's probably personal, shouldn't say. I do want to ask, and I know that you might not want to do this, but I'm asking that you will come out and join us in the City of Phoenix tonight at 2201 East Camelback Road. It's not about Democrats or Republicans, it's about the citizens of Phoenix. I'm asking all Republicans, all Democrats, who still believe in the concept that we are a nation of laws and not a nation of men, and want eyewitness testimony, I'm asking that you councilmembers would come out by the Biltmore tonight. It starts at 5:30 to 8:30 with nonviolent, loving individuals, because our country should be about loving each other, coming together, not being divided by hate, as you know, certain individuals in Washington, D.C. want. So I'm asking that you come out tonight, we're going to be near Senator Martha McSally's office, and we just, we just ask her to please, on behalf of the many citizens of Phoenix, I know many of you watching will disagree, but you never, we haven't ever had an impeachment trial on this level, I believe, without eyewitnesses. A manuscript doesn't do it. John Bolton needs to testify. And I know you all making your deals, Governor made the deal on the SR 51. Doug, you know, hey, good on you. Now help the people out in the Meadows Project in Councilwoman Laura Pastore's district. So anyways, I'm inviting you to come down to Martha McSally's office tonight, 5:30. Republicans and Democrats, independents, come together tonight, nonviolently, and demand that our Senator, who represents the City of Phoenix, Senator Martha McSally, acknowledge the fact that we are a nation of laws, not a nation of men. We got rid of King George over 200 years ago. We don't need a king. Please, come out and join us. Let's all come out in love and harmony, stand up for the United States of America. Phoenix is number one, it always will be, and it's going to get better, thanks to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joel will be followed by Joanne Launey-Copeland.
Mayor Gallego, councilmembers, thank you so much for hearing us today. By us, I mean, we are the Madison Street Pioneer Business Coalition. My name is Joel Copeland, and my wife is Joanne Launey, she'll be speaking in a bit. And we own and reside at Business House on 119 South 11th Avenue, which is a half a block from CAS, Central Arizona Shelter Services. Our business is called Gallery 119. And Mayor, I believe you've been there, you were, and when you were there, there was no notice of homeless people. I think you saw them coming in, you saw them going out. I first became aware of the homeless problem when I was painting the mural for the City Hall over there, and that's where all the homeless people were, right across from 300 West Washington. And now, of course, it's, they are concentrated by our business on Madison and 11th Avenue, 12th Avenue, 9th Avenue, that whole area where, if you were to count, it has just become exponential. I mean, when you were there, Mayor, there wasn't a big problem, and last year there wasn't, but it's been growing exponentially. And every night, if you can just imagine what's happening, I mean, if you go out there and count the tents that these people are staying in, you could come up with over 200, 250 tents, and each of them have two people in there, there's 500, there's like 700 people every night sleeping out in the streets. And that has to be, you know, can you imagine what that generates? It's just, it's untenable. So we need to find a solution. We need to find a solution quickly. And we have put together a pamphlet for you to look at, and what we really need is to open the emergency overflow. We need to get the people off the street and under shelter. We need to have them able to have porta-potties in those shelters. And I submitted last week, I believe, at the subcommittee hearing, where do we get these facilities? And I was wondering, whatever happened to Joe Arpaio's tents, you know, for Tent City? They must, I think they're owned by the county, but I bet they let us borrow them and put them up and let these people go into those tents, and it has to be something that they want to do. You know, if you don't want to, you can't force anybody into anything. It has to be something that appeals to them. And if they could have their own tents inside the big tent and be out of the weather and have a place to go to the bathroom and have a shower, it would really alleviate the problem. Now, you can't imagine, you know, my poor business neighbors can't get out their businesses. Right now, we have people right across the street, we're planning an opening coming up on next month in March, and it's going to be impossible. Now, we've had many openings before, and we've had the doors open, and the people have been very respectful and considerate of us. And when I've asked them to move, they've moved. There really hasn't been a problem with us and the business. But now, it's becoming to the point where we can't handle it. And if you see these other people, they can't even get into their businesses for the people that are camping in front of them. So we need to do something now. We need to have the emergency overflow shelter reinstated. Thanks so much for listening to us, and we have lots more.
Joanne will be followed by Bill Morland.
Hello, Joanne Launey-Copeland. Thank you so much for letting me speak. I'm a member of the Madison Street Pioneers Business Coalition, and we moved into the area two years ago. And shortly thereafter, I believe, the emergency overflow had been closed, and it's been growing exponentially, the people on the street, living right under my window and using the alley and all the street as a bathroom. It's a very big health and social problem, especially health problem. My husband has to go out and clean the alley because the city doesn't clean the alleys. The city does clean the streets. So it's imperative that we get this emergency overflow. So it's imperative that we get this emergency overflow reopened for the homeless, and also clean up the alleys. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Moreland will be followed by Dr. Derousse.
Hi, my name, hi, my name is Bill Moreland. I'm also with the Madison Pioneers Coalition. So I'm the owner of Electric Supply Incorporated. We're a 30-person business that is down at 917 West Madison. We've been in the neighborhood since the 1970s, so the homeless population has been around that entire time. We have never really had any issues with them. We know CAS is there. We work with them. You know, we live respectfully and in peace with the people, and have for years. Since about mid-December, it has gotten out of hand, and that's the only reason that we are here today. I have people that have worked with me since the 1980s. They have never been nervous about coming to work until now. And it is because there are people camped all along the street on both sides, and there are tents that stay there forever, and the people have dogs, the people have pit bulls, and the people have settled in there. I don't know where they go to the bathroom, unfortunately. Sometimes I do know where they go to the bathroom, because I see it. There's trash everywhere. There is waste everywhere. So we work with CAS. I'm on the board of CAS, and we strongly support what CAS wants to do in terms of helping people. But the situation right now is not healthy, and it's not safe, and it's not safe for the neighbors, it's not safe for the businesses, it's not safe for our customers, and it's not safe for the people that are down there living on the street. So, and it's not safe for the police, who are tasked with enforcing the laws down there. So we are asking that the city take some kind of immediate action. We understand that a long-term solution is being looked at, and that a long-term solution needs to be found, but something has to be done now. So I'm joining my fellow members of the coalition in asking that the city work with the appropriate entities to get a emergency overflow shelter opened as quickly as possible. It would allow the police to direct people to someplace. It would give the people that are living on the street someplace that they can go, feel safe, have facilities they can use, and find the services that most of them really do need and want in order to get out of the situation that they're in. So, and I would like to submit for the council and the city manager copies of a package that was put together by one of our members that kind of illustrates what exactly is going on down in the area where we are affected. Thank you for the time.
Mayor, I would just note that I am, I am meeting with the group tomorrow as well.
Thank you. Dr. Derousse will be followed by our final speaker of the public comment period, Ian Francis Green.
And thank you, Mayor Gallego, and distinguished members of the council. My name is Dr. Dolph Derousse. I too am a member of the Madison Pioneers Coalition. I bought the building on the corner of 11th Avenue and Jefferson, it's walking distance from here in 2004. It was rundown. It was horrible, and it was basically occupied by drug addicts and drug dealers. And with the generous cooperation of the police, we slowly cleaned it up, we renovated, we did it to the nines, we got all the druggies out. The whole area was improving. And that was on a linear track until about three or four months ago, where, as everyone else has commented, the problem has grown exponentially. Now, I have empathy for some of the other speakers, including the gentleman who said he is part of this, this group that is living there. I have real empathy for that. We want a solution that works for everyone, but what is happening at the moment is certainly not sustainable. And to give it some perspective, I've invested in the Garfield area, in the Willow area for decades now. From my accent, you can probably tell I wasn't born here, but I have lived in Phoenix longer than anywhere else. I love it here. And we've got to do something. And just to give it some perspective, I've written 15 books on real estate. I've had forwards from my books written by none other than baseball Hall of Famer A-Rod, and even the current president, for what it's worth. I'm not a novice at this game. I've invested in countries all over the world, and never in my life have I had a situation where I fear going to my property for two reasons. Is a health and safety reason, where when I step back into my car, I have to check how much human excrement is on my shoes before I walk into my car. And I guarantee you, if we walked there right now, none of you would keep your shoes on when you went into your homes at night. And the second one is a safety issue, where I have been attacked by someone wielding a six-foot galvanized iron rod, which ironically, he stole from my property by wrestling it out of the ground. It was the fence post to a gate, to a little garden area. This is something that we need to do something about. And the irony is, it's walking distance from the council chambers, it's in line of sight from the state Capitol building. It is right in front of all of us. I think we need to get our heads together, come up with a solution that works for everyone, and realize that we can work together to solve this problem. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Mr. Green is our final speaker.
Mayor, councilmembers, I couldn't have said it better myself, and I'm not as good of a public speaker as Dolph is, but I can tell you from a little bit different perspective of living down on 9th Avenue in Madison, my name is Ian Francis. I own buildings from 809 to 817 West Madison Street, and on Jackson Street as well. We step out of our doors and businesses in the morning, and we literally have to either look where we're stepping and clean up human feces. We're dealing with a problem that is so far out of hand that it's becoming a daily, full-time job to keep just our front areas of our businesses and our homes clean. And we have to take our shoes off. We can't wear them in the buildings because it's absolutely unsanitary. Some of the things that I want to note as facts, on January 27th, we took account, there were 231 tents on the boundaries of Jackson, Madison, and Jefferson Street between 9th Avenue and 13th Avenue. Each tent contains between two and five people. If you do the math, that's between 450 and 800 people at any time that are living literally on the curbsides of that several-block radius. It's intensely populated and dense. I've never seen anything in my life like it, to be completely honest. We're in a situation where we're experiencing health hazards. There's human defecation. We see people using drugs out in the open daily. Several of our members have also, as myself, have witnessed people this morning having sex and masturbating out on the streets and the sidewalks, out in the open. It's unbelievable what you see out there. We've begun to see rats infesting the trash piles that are accumulating. The stench, you can smell it literally for blocks. If you go down into that area, you know you're getting to somewhere bad when you're two blocks away, and you can already smell it. It's absolutely incredible. If you take a look at the booklets that we've handed out, we've illustrated quite graphically some of these things that we've put together. I've only had 48 hours to put that booklet together, but there's enough in there, I think, that you guys have to take this extremely seriously. We're dealing with other things on the side, like people handing out food. That's something we're trying to deal with, with the shelter, and getting these food service handlers and these other service people that are offering haircuts and all this to go to the campus. That's not the main issue. That's part of a longer-term solution. The short-term solution is health and safety. From a crime perspective, we're also witnessing things, and especially later at night, I live in the area, it's right outside my door, we're witnessing prostitution, human sex trafficking, underage prostitution. Some of these people that are out there standing on the street corners are honest to God, between probably 13 and 15 years old. These are not adults. These are children that are on the streets being hustled. We're seeing the drug deals happen from the cars, between the gangs that are coming into the neighborhood on bicycles at night. It's incredible what you see down there. Last Saturday, I just got a death threat while taking pictures for this pamphlet to put together, and for the first time in my life, I've had to arm myself because I'm not used to getting death threats quite personally. So we need to come up with, as a whole, the city and the council, a comprehensive plan that puts together a long-term solution for this problem. But right now, today, we need to get these people into overflow shelters. We need to work with CAS and the Human Services Campus today, call them up. I've spoken to Dave and Amy over there. They're willing to help out, but their hands are tied because of their application processes that they're working with you guys for, to expand the shelter. They don't want to do anything without permission, but they've got the space to get these people off of the street today, and we need to do something about it before somebody gets killed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pastore.
City Manager Ed Zucker, there's several questions that I'd like to put on the record. The homeless situation, how does that, how do we handle that? Because my understanding is we put $3 million in...
Councilwoman, we can agendize this at a future meeting...
I just want to, I just want to...
And we actually have, several of our subcommittees have items related to this coming up, but because it is not agendized, it's...
Right. I just want to, I got it. But those are the following questions that I want, because I think we have to have a larger conversation on this, and understanding where Phoenix plays in all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.